And the Social Justice, I'm sorry, Community Safety and Social Justice Committee. Because we are allowed to have meetings completely virtually, that is why we are doing this meeting this way. And given that we have a quorum of the council present, I'm going to call the special meeting to order at four fifteen. I'll call upon counselors and please let me know that you can hear me and I can hear you. Pat De Angelis.
Present.
Anna Dublin-Gothier.
Present.
Counselor Ete. Lynn Griesmer is present. Counselor Hanke.
Present.
Bob Hegner.
Present.
Counselor Lord. Pretty much expecting her. Pam Rooney. Counselor Ryan.
Present.
Kathy Shane.
I'm here.
Andy Steinberg.
Present.
Jennifer Taub.
Here.
Counselor Walker.
Here.
Okay, and there's no chat room of counselors or anybody else's technical issues, please let us know. I'm now asking Deb Ferrera as one of the coaches.
Counselor Lord is here.
Okay, Counselor Lord. Can you hear us?
She's got it on mute.
Yeah, I know.
Is that for me? Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lord, thank you. Thank you, and please keep an eye out for anybody else. I'm asking Deb Ferrera to call the meeting of the Community Safety and Social Justice Committee to order. Deb?
Yep, thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I wanna call to order the Community Safety and Social Justice Committee meeting at four seventeen P M. It'll be myself and two other members because Everold and Allegra were not able to join us today. But I'm going to have myself and then the other two introduce themselves to you all before we continue on with this meeting. So, you know, my name is Deborah Ferrera, and I do wanna say that I'm deeply saddened, frustrated, and angry that it was necessary to have another meeting today in order to pass a motion that would help community members in Amherst. This happened the last time we met with you in October twenty twenty-two when Counselor Hanke shut down discussions, and now Counselor Steinberg does the same thing. It shows without a doubt that you don't care about those who are on the margin, who are voiceless, and include those who are Black, BIPOC, LGBTQIA, English as a second language, immigrants, houseless, homeless, and who, and those who are disabled. I know it is not all of you on this council who believe in this way, but you are a unit. I want to remind you that we are volunteers, and we stayed until that late hour to talk about these issues, but Counselor Steinberg felt he was too tired, too tired to deal with issues that impact our safety. Is that what the council is telling me? This motion needs to pass, and it needs to pass with deadlines embedded in it. Our presentation on Monday was a report card, and it showed that the council did not follow through on their own promises to put the C S W G recommendations in place and making their twenty twenty-two priorities a reality. We will hold you accountable for the promises you made. Want to remind you of the outstanding questions we raised during Monday's meeting. I hope someone is taking notes. Crest is understaffed and underfunded. It went from ten staff with eight responders to seven staff with only five responders, and can only hire one other responder compared to the police, who dropped from forty-eight to forty-seven police officers because they had one position frozen. As the L W V report stated, BIPOC and those on the margin are the ones that use Crest the most, so you are impacting them the most. Most calls are nonviolent, and Crest needs to be, to respond to those calls. It's not a matter of responding to some calls, but all calls that are nonviolent. The town manager must ensure all nonviolent calls are being dispatched to Crest by December twenty twenty-five. This needs to be part of this motion. Crest hours need to increase to four to twelve A M., which is when the most incidents happen, and they must be in operation over the weekend. Funding must be increased for what, for that to happen. Paul Bachman needs to give C S S J C a full report relevant to the Youth Empowerment Center and assign a liaison to our monthly meetings that can give us updates on when Y E C will be established. This needs to happen by December twenty twenty-five meeting. Y E C needs to be fully funded in Paul's next budget report in May twenty twenty-six, and the Y E C needs to be established by August twenty twenty-six, so our youth have a place to go when school starts. When will the Resident Oversight Board be established? Stop with the delay. Our BIPOC community is being silenced by not having empowered Rob that has investigatory powers. Rob needs to be established by June twenty twenty-six. When will the Police Chief communicate that A P D is an anti-racist and intentionally build an actively anti-racist culture in the A P D? They need to hire Dr. Barbara Love to do long-term, multi-year, intentional anti-racist work with them. When will A P D revise the policies as recommended by LEAP and was incorporated in the Power B C L G W G recommendations? C S S J C is a town committee, and we need to meet with the town council at the very least twice a year and as needed. With these meetings dedicated to these issues held at decent hours with no motions to stop our discussions. These meetings must be calendared today. Also, the town manager needs to meet with us as requested. At a minimum, the town needs to have a monthly standing meeting with the Black Business Association of Amherst Area and all other BIPOC businesses. The town needs to establish a staff person to help immigrants and who are being persecuted by ICE are vulnerable to ICE. There needs to be an intentional implementation of translation services for town meeting events. And lastly, we wholeheartedly support the establishment of the Reparations Committee and making sure the Human Rights Commission bylaws are adopted. Now I'll give the, I'll let the others introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Erica Piedat. I've been on the Community Safety and Social Justice Committee since December of twenty twenty-four. I think Deborah has stated our unified response to what we believe should happen today. And I just wanna just add that there's no fast way to road to trust in your constituents that by not fulfilling your promises and by not continuing to act justly. So please do pass this resolution. Thank you. I'll turn it to Lizette.
Hi, Erica. Thank you. I apologize. I have my camera off because I am still at work. But again, my name is Lisette Paredes. I've been in the C S S J C for the last approximately two and a half years. I quickly wanted to thank you all, including the town manager and the town council, for having us before them on Monday. I honestly, being my first time before the council, I did not know what to expect, but I can confidently say that the turnout events was definitely below my expectations. I quickly wanna say that I appreciate and thank those that were engaged with the presentation and listened carefully to what Deborah and Allegra presented, but would also like to note that falling asleep or nodding off were signals of some members of this town, of how this town perceives C S S J C and what we represent and who we support. I quickly want to say that I think that it's very important for Amherst to be Amherst. I know that there's been a lot of comments about Crest becoming similar to the North Hampton D C C model. It's been mentioned a few times, but even though that may be a very good program and effective for North Hampton, North Hampton's needs can't be compared to Amherst. I think this is very clear in the LEAP report. If people were able to revert back to it, the LEAP, to highlight it, it's a nonprofit from current and former police officers and prosecutors. So professionals in this field that reported and gathered recommendations very specific to Amherst with data that was conducted by them at the time of the, the research. The report, just to mention a couple of things, it stated that Crest would primarily handle eleven types of calls from mental health to verbal disputes and suspicious vehicles. That's not being done. Crest would be available from nine A M. until two A M., covering an estimated eighty-seven percent of anticipated call volumes. The remaining seven hours of Crest, there would actually be a responder on call, but obviously the current hours and the staffing don't allow for Crest to do this. Also, I read, re-read the report that town manager sent to the C S S J C and the Human Rights Commission back on March seventeen, two thousand twenty-three, and it actually stated that dispatch policies are now being reviewed by the town attorney. I don't know what happened to this. I don't know if that was ever readdressed. I could be incorrect that it wasn't. But yeah, I think that.
Yeah, it never was.
Thank you, Deborah. I know that police or officer safety is a huge part of the pushback and discussion as to why Crest's officers should not be attending certain types of calls, but I think that it's very important to acknowledge that this field, there's, will always be a safety issue. But training and being able to analyze the phone calls and gather as much information as possible to be able to send these officers out there, it's something that we definitely have to work on.
Thank you, Lizette. Thank you, Lizette. Hopefully you all listen to our remarks because we take it to heart and, you know, we want you all to really pay attention. As Lizette said, it's not okay for people to fall asleep while we are doing our presentation. We don't fall asleep, but we're listening to you all, so why should you all fall asleep while, while we're doing our presentation? That's just unacceptable.
Hi, everyone.
Everold, please.
Oh, Everold, you're here!
I am, yes. Hi. Thank you, everyone, for having us back again, and my name is Everold Henry. I am one of the members of C S S J C, and I'm here voicing my support for the council to adopt the motion that is before you guys today. And so I, I know I missed the presentation on Monday, but I just wanna articulate a few points, starting with that, you know, supporting this automatically builds trust within our community. The fact that our community sees the town council adopting recommendations that were made years ago to actually have them feel more equitable in the town of Amherst, feel safer in the town of Amherst, automatically that is a trust-building exercise. It builds trust with the government. It builds trust with the police. And I think everyone here would agree that when there's trust between government and the community, the community as a whole is safer, it's more prosperous, it's more productive. So if for any other reason that to support this motion tonight is one, that you show the community, yes, that we hear you, we hear the people that represent you, we wanna make sure that you have a voice, and we wanna make sure that you trust the government that represents you. And so I'm starting with that automatically supporting this builds trust in the community. Now, I, I know that prior to Monday, there, many on the council didn't fully appreciate what Crest was or what Crest did, but one of the things, you know, as an attorney and works in the criminal justice system, one of the things that I can very much appreciate is that Crest really does provide an appropriate response to nonviolent crises, and that cannot be overstated. There are many calls for services that automatically does not warrant police response, or an armed response, rather. And so there are opportunities here for people to say, you know, here, I have this issue with, you know, it's a mental health crisis, or whether it is, you know, it, it doesn't necessarily warrant that six cars or three cars from A P D shows up. And by having this alternative response to the police, automatically frees up law enforcement resources. So we're not taken away from A P D, where Crest is afforded the opportunity for law enforcement to prioritize and to focus where really serious crimes and urgent public safety matters are needed. So that should really be paramount when you think about this, not just Crest is taking away the jobs from the police. No, there are opportunities here where the police can focus more resources where it is needed and allow Crest to operate where Crest is needed. Now, even, we, we've talked about budgets with the police, you know, only losing one position and Crest losing police. This is a cost savings opportunity. So I imagine, you know, I know that with every government, you know, you have to balance the budget. Yes, you do. You have to work within whatever financial restraints you have. This is a cost savings opportunity. If you look at Crest's line item, it is significantly less than A P D is. And so diverting nonviolent calls from traditional policing can lead to significant financial savings for the town by reducing unnecessary arrests, jail time, and emergency medical services. So even if you look at it from a financial perspective, there are arguments to be made that supporting Crest is supporting the bottom line for Amherst's financial dollars. Now, one of the things I have the benefit of doing is I work with people who ask me questions about Crest to say, you know, hey, I called nine one one, however, what I really wanted was for Crest to come, but the police showed up. And one of the reasons that happens is because Crest is not on traditional dispatch. And yes, there are arguments to be made that, you know, to Lizette's earlier point, that safety is a concern, and safety will always be concerned. If, if a police officer goes there, there's always a safety concern that the police officer is going into an environment that they don't know what's there. And so that is there, but it does not, the, the evidence is not overwhelming so much that, you know, this should not be done because it's a safety concern. There is trial and error. It can be done in a responsible way that allows us to say, okay, Crest is on the nine one one dispatch. Here are the calls they take. Okay, now that they're on here, we can see this is appropriate. This is not appropriate. When we have our meetings, you know, Crest provides us data as the calls they respond to. So, you know, we, we, you will have access to that information. You can be provided information to say, you know, here is what they've done. Here is what needs to be done. What we don't have, quite frankly, is for, which we've been asking for quite some time, is call logs and dispatch logs from A P D to say, these are the calls we respond to, to articulate areas where Crest would have been more appropriate versus, you know, an armed response. So again, just going back to the commitment that the town council made, I, I can appreciate that in the wake of George Floyd, every community across America were being, quite frankly, it was reactive. It wasn't necessarily proactive, it was reactive. This horrible thing happened, and everyone had to take a very hard look to say, how do we make sure this doesn't happen in our community? But when you made that commitment, it wasn't just, it should not have been just in that moment, but it should have been a long-term commitment. It was documented. It was written. It was voted on. It was agreed upon. And here we are, years later, asking for you to honor that commitment and move this forward. We, as the C S S J C, pledge that commitment to work with Crest, work with the town, to help steward this. We are, as Deborah said, we are volunteers. We are not paid, but this is our community. It matters to us, and we are willing to do the work. We're simply saying, support what you committed to, support the town of Amherst, support every person in the town of Amherst, not just a particular group. And I think tonight, by supporting this motion, that's exactly what you're doing. You're saying to the community that we hear you. You're part of a community. We want to make sure that we are building community trust with you. We want to make sure that you feel heard, and by taking this vote, that's exactly what you do tonight, and I ask that you support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanna make sure that we recognize that we have two people, a couple other staff people with us today. We have Pamela Young, who is head of our D E I department. We have Philippa Villa, who is also with the D E I department. And we have Camille Terry, I never get it right.
Teriak.
Teriak, thank you, who is head of Crest. Did I miss anybody else? And oh, I need to make sure that Freka Ete, I saw you earlier, Counselor Ete. But I don't see you now. Okay. We, I did agree to have a period of public comment. If you would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time.
Lynn, can I just point out, I apologize. I just wanted to let the group know. I do have a hard stop. I apologize. I misunderstood. I thought we were moving right to discussion of the motion, so I apologize in advance for having to leave early, and I'm happy to have continued discussion with anybody at any later point, even though I know this motion will have seen its course.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I am seeing five hands, and that's all the hands I'm going to recognize. I'm going to start with Pat O. Pat Anabaku, please enter the room. You have two minutes.
Can people hear me?
We can.
Oh, okay. Pat Anabaku, District Two. I'll be very brief. So I want to echo what, you know, what the S S J C committee members, you know, have said. You know, since after election results, I've been reflecting. And as a Black woman, I think the way I, am I interpreting, the result is that the voters want injustices in our town addressed. And for me personally, I want unity. I want peace. I want collaboration. And the only way it would happen is by our local government, the town council, the town manager, to take action on social justice projects that C S W G recommended four, four years ago. And so in order to really bring people together, this is what needs to happen because people are hurting in our town. And the town council will look different in January, and that's a good thing. Change is always good. And when we talk about collaboration, it cannot come from the powerful people. You guys need to be reaching out, listening to people who are hurting as a result of systematic oppression in our town. The town council needs to start building trust. I don't wanna repeat what some people have already said. That's the only way to bring people together. I'm ready, you know, for us to come together and prioritize the needs of people first, before infrastructure.
Ms. Pat, thank you for joining us.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Ronnie Parker, please enter the room. State your name and where you live.
This is Ronnie Parker. I live in District Four. I've just come to say what a great report that C S W G report is. I've, I read it through a few months ago again. It's well researched. It's thorough. And I can see how it urged everyone to say, following George Floyd, et cetera, to say, oh, this is great. Let's do these things. But I really have been wondering why nothing has been done, or so little has been, not nothing, so little has been done. And why is it now so difficult to reaffirm a commitment that was made on a vastly overwhelming majority vote? I think it was something to one. I can't help thinking that, not that people weren't serious at the time, but really there seems to be a certain level of disbelief, and I've actually heard people say, I don't believe this. But then there's all this data that says this is happening, and it's persistent. It's consistent. So I think it's really time to sort of overcome yourself and look at what's happening and what people are saying is happening. And how could you not care about that? Why does that require decision-making? I mean, it's obvious. A substantial portion of our population is in distress. And how is it that one has to think about it? I, I just, I, I'm just incredulous. I just don't understand it. And I have to say that you have to ask yourselves, how many people have to complain? How many people have to have a negative experience with our government before you will act? For me, the answer is zero. In Amherst, we shouldn't have anyone having the kinds of experiences we're hearing about, and it does seem unbelievable to those who don't experience that. But people are telling us this. I want us to really please listen and help everybody to feel more respected. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us, Ronnie. Rabbi Esther, please enter the room. State your full name and where you live.
Hi, my name is Rabbi Esther Azar, and I live on Henry Street. On Monday, I heard members of this council speak about the strides the town has made in creating Crest and how we are far ahead many other towns in our anti-racist actions. And while that might be true, unless we provide the structural changes that are necessary in order to implement Crest at its full capacity, we have invested millions in a performative action. Because ultimately, if Crest is not fully functional, those the town set out to support are not actually being supported. The question before you today, whether to support the resolution put forward by Counselor Lord, does not require additional funding, and it is, it is within the goals set forth by the town manager himself. So from a financial perspective, it feels like a no-brainer. In fact, not supporting the program that the town funded seems fiscally irresponsible and continues to create a community of harm for firstly, our BIPOC constituents, and ultimately for the whole community that's impacted by by any racist action.
Rabbi Esther, can you, is your sound still okay?
I'm done. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for joining us. Amber Cano-Martin.
Hi, everybody. I'm Amber Cano-Martin, resident of District Two. And I'm just joining today to comment on the, the motion that was introduced by Counselor Lord that the priorities set and voted on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two continue to be implemented and enthusiastically supported, as well as support for the town manager in his goal to get Crest to be on dispatch by the end of December. I think those things are pretty easy in terms of what they would require, given that the town manager had already said that he was planning on doing that and that we have already committed to those priorities in twenty twenty-two, so it's a recommitment and a reaffirmation. So I don't expect that there should be anything controversial about that, given that it's already things that have been approved and are part of the town's work. So I wanna just urge everybody to, to make sure that you vote yes on that. I hope this won't end up being a long discussion because it does seem sort of like a no-brainer, and it's a huge, important priority for our community and particularly marginalized communities who have long been saying that getting Crest fully up and running and fully functional is a top priority. So again, I urge you all to vote yes. And just echoing the point of a previous commenter that there have been some conversations on this council about actions that are performative and, you know, whether, for example, saying George Floyd Day was something that was performative. We can debate that all we want, but this is something that is concrete and real and something that has been requested by our BIPOC community. So let's not be performative, and let's, let's approve this motion and get this work going. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you for joining us, Amber. Russ Vernon-Jones, please enter the room. State your name and where you live. You need to unmute. Thank you.
Russ Vernon-Jones, I live on Gaylord Street in Amherst. And as many of you know, I was a member of the Community Safety Working Group. And I remember when we first presented, I guess it was the second report, that Counselor Griesmer suggested that the council move forward by having a matrix that took the recommendations and established dates for, for moving things forward. And some good things have happened, no question. And I know that many of you care about social justice in our town. But I think we're at a point where some of these things that have been on the, been recommendations on the board for quite a while, it's time to really get them into, really enact them and make them happen. And it's, our town council, you really are the ones who can do that. And I think Counselor Lord's motion is a very appropriate. It should not be hard to pass, in my opinion. The one piece is the dispatch piece. And frankly, you've been getting different excuses for the last three years or more about why Crest is not. about why CREST is not included in dispatch. And I think it's, that all the questions have really been answered at this point. It's time for the excuses to end and to actually dispatch CREST through our dispatch department. Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Russ. Martha Hannah, please enter the room, state your name and where you live.
Thank you, Martha Hannah, District Five. Monday night, I expressed my concern over the lack of trust I've seen in our community. And I hope you all have read the reports and taken them seriously. Today, you have a choice. Does the council truly represent and support all of our residents? Or are you going to say that building trust across our community is just too expensive? Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, Martha. That concludes public comment. We're going to move immediately to the first motion that's on the table. That motion was made by Councilor Lord and seconded by Councilor Walker. It is the following, that the priorities set and voted on November 14th, 2022, continue to be implemented and enthusiastically supported, adding that we support the town manager in his goal to get the CREST department to be on dispatch at the, by, at the end of December 2025. Are there any other counselors who would might like to make comments at this time? Andy, please unmute and make your comment.
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank CSSJC. The report that we received on Monday night was truly well thought out, well presented, and very thought-provoking. And we really needed the report that you received, so I want to thank you. I also want to apologize to you in that I think that it was unfortunate that you were made to sit through a long meeting to get to your agenda item and not having advanced notice of what would be the likely time in having come to that time more quickly. The reason that I made the request to postpone had nothing to do with my support for CREST. I have supported CREST all throughout. And I have expressed in many ways, including in my town manager evaluations of prior years, about the need to get CREST on to the dispatch system. Because we wouldn't really be able to know that it could be the effective program that was envisioned if we didn't do that. My concern on Monday was, is we had a motion on the floor. It was not in front of us in writing. We could not read it and see if there was anything that we needed to ask questions about. I felt that we had a responsibility as a council to be very thoughtful in our decision. I, of course, have said, been a lot of time over the last couple of days looking at the motion. And I agree with the point that was made by Attorney Henry earlier, that there are no significant financial costs. And finances are a real problem for the town right now. I am going to vote for it and hope my fellow counselors will join me in my vote in favor of the motion on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Are there any other comments from counselors? Seeing none, we're going to move to the vote. Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Ana Devlin-Gothier has had to leave. Councilor Ette is absent. Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Councilor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Councilor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney is absent, I'm sorry. Councilor Ryan?
Aye.
Council, Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Yes.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Alicia Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes with eleven in, no, ten in favor and two, and three absent. We are going to move immediately on to the next one. In the meantime, I'm going to suggest that, well, we can just wait till the end. I'm going to suggest that the regional school debt authorization, the motion was made and seconded. I made the motion, Kathy Shane seconded. Are there any questions or comments? I also want to note that Shannon Bernacci is in the audience with us today. Yes, Bob Hegner?
I just had a question about the total, is the total for all four towns? Is this what the total for the entire project is? Or is this only Amherst share of the, of the total?
I'm going to ask Kathy Shane, who's chair of the finance committee, to comment.
Yes, and Bob, I know you weren't there the day we were discussing this at the finance committee. So if you look at the report, the total cost of the roof is 10 million. The state, that's the total. And the state will play roughly 6 million of that, leaving four for the whole district. The Amherst share is about 78% of the 4 million. But there was an earlier authorization for 3 million for the middle school roof. And there's a substantial amount of that left, so that will be rescinded. So our share will be of something less than 4 million. And it will be debt financed. So people, it's not going to hit the budget next year. And the expectation that Shannon had, when we were talking with her now, almost a month ago, was that sometime in December, they'll have a better sense of, are we talking about a 10-year bond? What kind of interest, what does that look like? So we were looking at, we already have it in our capital budget, the middle school roof, but for that smaller amount. So how much addition we're going to see in our capital plan? So I hope that, that's the big picture, that that's the whole roof. And then the town, the district, the regional district share is four, and of that, we're about 78%.
Counselor Walker?
Yeah.
Sorry, Kathy can finish if she wanted to finish.
Okay, the only other thing I was going to say is that, this is what I said, it's the whole roof, it's the whole roof project. But MSBA, in their wisdom, said the auditorium roof is only 23 years old. So it's not old enough, even if it's leaking, to be covered under this project. So there's a piece of the middle school roof that we may or may not, it will have to come to us, might look at financing to have it happen at the same time, in other ways. But, but in terms of the, the bigger picture of it, our share is not 10 million, it's not four, it's a share of that. And then all of that will be reduced by the amount that's going to be rescinded. The only other thing is, if people have read the memo, at the point we were voting, MSBA had not yet voted to authorize the money. So we said, wait for that, that has happened, they've approved. That money is there for, for Amherst and the district, the region. I'm, I'm through now, Alicia.
Thank you.
I think I did as much as I can.
Additional comments. Counselor Walker?
Thank you, I think, Lynn, you may have formally placed a motion on the table, but I am hoping that we might allow the CSSJC to say any closing remarks and adjourn their meeting unless we have other agenda, other agenda items that requires their presence.
We don't have any other agenda items, I was hoping that this was going to be short and then we would all adjourn, but
Oh, well, if they want to sit through this, but I'm not sure this has anything to do with their charge.
Deborah, would you like to adjourn your committee?
Yes, as long as all the other community, committee members are good with us adjourn, because I'm, I'm ready to adjourn. So the, the last comments that I want to make is, again, to thank you all for letting us present you all on Monday. And obviously, unfortunately, it was needed for us to have to meet again, even though, like, like I said before, we're volunteers and we take this very seriously. So it was really difficult for us to then have to change everything around to, to have to make it today. And the parting comments that, that we want to make is that we are vigilant. We're going to hold you all accountable. And it's not going to take three years for us to show up again. We are going to be showing up to, with, to you all, you know, on a, like, every two to three months, we'll be back. And you all can't avoid us, and you all can't be afraid of us, because we're going to continue. These are, these issues are critical to our town, and all of our residents are important in our town. And so we're going to hold you all accountable. And at this point, it's 4:54, and I call the CSSJC meeting.
If I can just add something.
Go ahead.
No, so, thank you everyone for your continued support and for passing this motion. But most importantly, to Deb's point is, we are a resource and we believe that we have not been utilized. So we are here, and you guys should utilize us. That is why we're here, we're for the community, not just for BIPOC people, but the community as a whole. So again, we are here, utilize us.
And we're an advisory committee to you all. So it's just basically, you're wasting our valued expertise and experience that we have and by not utilizing it. So it doesn't, it doesn't really make sense to me. But anyway, any, any other comments before I, okay, Lisette? Erica, you can, all right. So at this point, I'm convening the CSSJC meeting at 4:55 PM. Thank you all.
We want to thank you for joining us and thank you for making time for this additional meeting.
Thank you.
We're going to go back to the comments with regard to the middle school roof. Pat DeAngelis?
Yeah, just quick, I wanted to check with Kathy. You said there was 4 million, and that we, the region, Amherst share of the regions would be 78% of that. And I, when I did a quick calculation, that was 3,120,000, approximate. So do we really have to rescind, or do we?
So the, so, I tried to write this out in the, in the report, Pat, but I'll go through it quickly. So there's a separate vote that all of us took, and it's in our budget already, for 3 million. And our share of that was about 78%. That wasn't.
Okay, then I, all right.
You know, so that, that was, that was there. And the region used a piece of that for the design of the new roof of, you know. And so there's about 2.5 million of that left, that'll be subtracted. So the new, so what I was, I wasn't doing the math well, but the new won't even be 4 million. The new will be less than that, because the other will be rescinded. And then, so it will go up. And then, and then our share will always be 78% of what that total is. So did that?
Thank you.
You know, so the rescind.
I got it.
Shannon didn't want to rescind it until we pass the new, because that, they might, if it didn't get funded, that money was still available to do short-term repairs on the roof. So that will then disappear.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Ryan?
So Kathy, just, just confirming what I think you just said, that this does not include the, the part of the roof that goes over the auditorium? And that you or someone will have to come back to us at some point for that amount?
That is correct.
And then the number Shannon gave me quickly when I asked about this, she actually went, they, they, the team, and if you didn't hear their presentation, they're excellent. The team did the square footage of the roof and did just, just a quick estimate. It's, it's over a million for that piece of the roof. I think mil, million point two. So that was left to be determined if they could just bid that out at the same time they bid the MSBA portion. George, so, and it, it seemed like it would be more efficient to get all the roofers up and do the whole roof at, at once, rather than come back and get it later. If we wait two more years, it meets the 25-year ridiculous threshold. But it is, if you walk into the auditorium, it's leaking.
No, right, exactly.
This is not a, this is not a, you know, let's wait till it gets old enough so that the
So Kathy, they're going to go ahead and do this estimate, they're going to do the estimate, they're doing, do the whole roof?
Well, that's it, Shannon will have to come back to, what, what, what? The way we left it is that the region would come in with a request. And we haven't closed our last year, our most recent budget yet, George, in terms of what kind of free, what's the free cash that we have determination. So if we put more money into it, the time, and wanted to have it on the same schedule, we'd have to put it in in this fiscal year. So that's the most logical place for it to come from, if, if we get free cash. And I don't know what the other towns will say, so that is all to be determined. But this is all supposed to happen when the school goes adjournment in June. The roof work will be done in the summer, so the school will open with a new roof. So this is all a real time, you know, not two years from now, it's, it's going to happen in the next, in this fiscal year with the MSBA money.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the council? Seeing none, we're going to move to a vote. I'm going to start with Lynn Griesmer is an aye. Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney is absent. Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
Ana Devlin-Gothier is absent, she was here earlier, and Councilor Ette is absent. So the motion passes with 10 people in favor and three absent. Is there a motion, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Shane seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. I'm going to start with Counselor Hanke?
Aye.
Bob Hegner?
Aye.
Counselor Lord?
Aye.
Pam Rooney?
She's absent.
Yeah, thank you. Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Kathy Shane?
Yes.
Andy Steinberg?
Aye.
Jennifer Taub?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Pat DeAngelis?
Aye.
And Lynn Griesmer is an aye, the meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, Andy.